Good afternoon everyone and I'd like to take this opportunity to thank you for attending this meeting today of the Education, Children and Families Policy Committee. The meeting today is open to the public and the meeting will be webcast and the recording will also be available for people to view later through the council's website. It is also possible that Sheffield Live TV will record and rebroadcast this meeting although I don't see we've got anyone in the public gallery today. We have not received any public questions or petitions from members of the public by the submission deadline. Please request, can I just request that people's mobile phones and other such devices are switched to silent mode so as not to disturb the conduct of the meeting. There is no fire test planned today. If there is an emergency evacuation, please take instructions from the town hall staff and the assembly point is in Tudor Square. Could I ask each committee member in turn to introduce themselves please and we'll go from this side. Council Hussain.
Council Talibson, Council of Benvy Ward.
Council Nidhavishara, Nether Redgin Shallow Ward.
Marouf Raf, Council of Nether Redgin Shallow and Deputy Chair of this committee.
Malaka Hayby, Councilor for Bromhill and Shawvale.
Ian Horner, Councilor for Baiton.
Mohamed Mary, Councilor for Graves Park and Group Spokesperson for Liptons.
Council Anwicke, Councilor for West Ecklesfield Ward.
Thank you. The agenda and reports for today's meetings are available on the council's website and paper copies are also available in the meeting and there is one Agenda Reports pack. Agenda item number one on the agenda, apologies for absence, do we have any apologies today, please?
We don't know.
Full house today then, everyone's turned up, thank you. Item two, exclusions of the public and press, please note there is one closed appendix related to item nine. If this appendix needs to be discussed, we may need to ask for the exclusion of the public and press and halt the webcast, however this is not expected to be necessary. Could I ask if any members in today's meeting have got any declarations of interest for today's agenda? No? Thank you. So Agenda item number four is the minutes of the previous meeting, they start from page 11 in the Agenda Reports pack. Does anyone have any matters arising from the minutes from the last meeting? No? So can I ask that we declare those a true record of our previous meeting? Thank you. We'll move on to Agenda item number seven now as there are no public questions or petitions and no members' questions at this point, which is the work programme. Fiona, could I ask you to present that, thank you.
Good afternoon everyone. So this item is just a chance for you to take a little look at the work programme and to give any feedback on the existing items or indeed to suggest any items to be added. I should point out that the version included in the Agenda Pack today was published before a number of changes were made, some other items have been added which are not included on this but will be available online for review. I think that's, I think that's everything, yeah?
Thank you. Would we have any questions on the work programme or any additions that you'd like to add at this point? Thank you. That's all. So now we move on to Agenda item number eight, which is the short breaks framework contract extension, which is at page 51 of your Agenda Reports pack and presenting today is Sally Willoughby and is Becky Tow come in? No? Okay? Neither? Okay. If you'd like to introduce yourself before you speak, thank you.
Good afternoon everyone, I'm Amy Budry, I'm Head of Commissioning for Children and Families at the East Council. Okay, thank you. So the report that you've got presented in relation to short breaks is seeking approval to uplift the current short breaks budget to create some additional capacity in response to growing demand. We're also wanting to commission a new transitions short break provision for young people aged 16 to 18 and we're wanting to extend the current framework of those providers currently providing short breaks provision for children with disabilities post March 24. So that is in order to enable us to undertake a commissioning exercise, to undertake a needs assessment, to invite children and families to consult and work with us to co-produce a model which meet the needs of families for the city. You've got the, the financial implications set out there under the recommendations, so in order to extend the current short breaks provision for the remainder of this year and next, we're looking at a financial envelope of £754,110 and to commission a new transition short break service, we're looking at a budget of £10852 and to increase the existing budget for the remainder of this year and for next, we're looking at a budget of £302,556 and we feel that that will be proportionate in order to respond to the demands that we're seeing from families. We know that number of children with SEND has increased, we know that demand for short breaks has increased, we know that some pressures on residential services for children have impacted on families' ability to be able to access the short breaks provision, so we feel that the intention set out here will address all of that and enable us to commission a model that's fit for purpose going forward.
Thank you Amy. Does anyone have any questions on this paper? No? Oh, Council Horner.
Yes, just a budgetary question, there's something about temporarily mitigated from within existing underspends, but I'm not clear as to what, how much that will be and what the effects will be, I mean we are overspent, are we not? I keep hearing from my colleagues in other places that education is overspent and I'm certainly don't object to these proposals, let me be very clear about that, but we need to make sure that they're sustainable.
Yeah, so we have undertaken financial analysis as part of the paper and it's the Children and Families budget that pays for short breaks provision, so we're assured that the shortfall can be covered from underspend in the, in the short term.
Sorry Chair, when you say in the short term, I mean how?
To cover the extension period and then we'll go out to procure a new model, yeah.
Thank you.
Meredith, did you just want to go on that?
Yes, please. So you're quite right that overarching, the budget that we have particularly around children and family services is overspending, it's overspending because of, there's a number of reasons, but one of them is high cost placements and it's the breakdown of, where there's a breakdown in families and children are needing to come into residential care. Now, one of the things that we've been really, really good at, and this was also reinforced by Ofsted, was we're really good at making sure that children and young people stay with their families, which is both a better outcome for children and young people but also more cost effective. So everything we're trying to do is trying to ensure that children remain with their families and remain in the best place for them. So whilst this is moving around some money, which you could argue could be taken, could perhaps underpin the overspend that we've got actually, to do this and to do this well means that the amount of money that we're spending on children in high cost placements, residential placements potentially reduces. So what we're doing in comparison nationally is actually, this doesn't necessarily feel and sound right, but our overspend is much lower than other local authorities because we are doing the right thing. So this is about doing the right thing and making sure our money is in the right place. And some of the technicalities that Amy is talking about is the budget lines that we're looking at within that, which is moving money around, but hopefully that answers the question about yes, we're spending although we've got an overspend, but this spend should reduce the potential of overspend and divert higher costs. Hope that helps.
Council Hayby.
This is just a clarification. 1.12 says due to the COVID pandemic, you had to cease delivery for the first two years. Did that save any money whatsoever or am I missing the mark?
It was ceasing face-to-face delivery, so families were still supported just through a different way, so families were still given an online offer. It didn't cease entirely.
And would you say that required the exact same amount of resources?
I don't know the answer to that, don't know.
That's it, that's it.
Meredith.
So there's been a range of different provision that's been put in place, so whilst we haven't been able to always have the, well we haven't had the short breaks homes open, what we have been doing is providing other support and also some direct payments to support families in their own homes. So that, so in that sense, we've not reduced the spending, it's just been put in a different place, so we're now sort of saying, okay, what do we do for the future? What's right for our children and families? How do we make sure that children can stay in the right place? Do we need the same amount of children home provision? Or actually are families now saying, the outdoor education provision that we've got has been really, has really embraced short breaks for children with disabilities and are doing some really great fantastic things. Children and young people are loving it, families are loving it, do we need to do more of that? And that's part of that conversation of how do we make our money go in the best way that meets the needs of children and young people and also families and we prevent breakdown? Hopefully that helps. How's Meredith?
Thank you Chair. A couple of questions from me, I think we're all agreed that this is something that is definitely needed and if not needed, far more than what we can provide at this time. But one of the questions is, post-COVID presumably this, the demand has actually increased quite considerably, if you can sort of comment on that. And secondly, and this is a very simplistic question because everybody talks about service providers, but we never really get any clarity in who these service providers that we're actually tendering from are, so it might be, might give it a little bit of clarity as to where we actually get the provision from, just to get it clear in my own mind if everybody else understands it anyway, but I just need it.
So like in lots of areas of provision, the pandemic impacted on the, on the delivery of this and how families could access it, one of the positives of that is that, as Meredith commented on, different ways of providing different activities have been developed over the last couple of years and actually families and children, young people have been really receptive to that. So we've trialled or piloted, if you like, over the last sort of 12 to 18 months, outdoor provision, different ways that families can access activities for their children. And all of that has been really useful and will inform the model that we need going forward. In answer to your question about providers, again because we've, we've got such a range of provision, we've got a number of different providers that have been involved in that and, you know, hopefully we'll continue to do so once we redesign because we know that different families and different young people are interested and benefit from different activities and therefore we need a range of provision and therefore providers to be able to meet that, that need.
I think, just to follow if I can Chair, I was just inquiring about who these providers are out there. If we're not providing them in-house, then who are we actually tendering these services to? When I'm bearing in mind the fact that we always seem to have quite a big overspend, I'm just looking, I'm exploring why, where we're actually getting this service from. And this applies to quite a number of other areas that we're getting provision externally as well. Because I, I don't know who these providers are and I'm not speaking for other members here, they may well do, but it just might be my ignorance that's kicking in here. Thank you Chair.
I think we'd be happy to provide a list of people that we're working with at the moment and some of that, so we do have a lot of in-house provision, so we have got the short breaks homes that we'll be reopening by the end of, I think in the next couple of days, one of the short breaks homes is reopening. As I said, our local authority outdoor education provider, so is doing fantastic work with our children with disabilities, it really would be worth us going out there and potentially doing a committee there and seeing what goes on because it is brilliant. And then you've got a range of voluntary and community organisations as well, SNIPS comes into my head at the moment, some of you will have heard of SNIPS, but there are a list of different people and we do look to contract manage it well and make sure that we are getting the most efficient and effective resource for our children and young people. I think if I go any further, I'll step into sort of views about where some of our high costs are and why that is high cost and it's not in this arena, it is, it is where we're then having to put children in really high cost residential placements. Sometimes that's right because we need to get the right therapy provision to ensure that those children and young people come back home into Sheffield and into their families and we've got evidence of that working really well. But sometimes it's, we know where the costs are high because the market is in that place, but it's not in this short break arena where that is one of the issues, so, but more than happy to get a list of current providers for, for the committee.
Thank you Chair, I mean that's pretty much where I was getting at, in terms of some sort of clarity and that's why I'm doing the deep dig here, to find out where, where the high costs are actually, because sometimes that provision, this is where you do get criticised as a local authority sometimes. Thank you.
The other, the other bit of this as well is that the, the review and the redesign will consider is how we can work with some of our organisations and providers, working with children without disabilities to be more accessible for children with disabilities as well, so we have more of a mixed variety of options for families and more access.
Council Basra.
Yeah, I think kind of like my, one of my questions has already been answered, but I just want to say, having the briefings and stuff, I found that, you know, excellent work has been done, Meredith, what you've highlighted, and it's amazing to hear that the families and children who are, who were providing the service to are being included and for this uplifting and the money that you mentioned, fully supportive, especially when you've mentioned co-producing and that's something key for me, engaging with those people who are affected, who the service is going to be providing, so whenever you mentioned that, I thought, you know, that's excellent, you've probably already been doing that before as well, but I think especially working out there with these families, you know, it's very much needed, wherever we can support yourselves, again, it's a collective thing, but just one little question, it was just about picking, maybe not relevant to this particular thing, the respite, because you mentioned SEND, so the short break, does that still include a bit of that? Because I know there's some, some places have been closed.
Okay, can you put your microphone on, please, sorry?
It's my phone, I told it to turn off.
Yes, so when we talk about short breaks, we talk about daytime short breaks or overnight short breaks or direct payments going to the family to support or short breaks, carers supporting families in their own homes.
And that will include children with really complex disabilities, but also young people who benefit from access to services that support them with special educational needs and disabilities as well.
Thank you, just to make it clear here, but I think that covers for me, thank you.
Council Hussain.
Thank you. My question is, is there any increase in number of children in this year or do you expect an increased number of children in need in next year or year after?
Pressing the wrong button now, I've just got new contact lenses, so apologies, I'm struggling to work out where things are. Yes, so one of the, one, so what we're asking for here today is just the, is the extension of the framework so that we've got longer to work on what comes next, which is the really exciting part, I suppose, and that will mean better understanding the demand for different types of activity, different types of respite, different types of short break. So as Amy said, there's, there's already a diverse offer, but we want that to be more diverse and part of that will be about understanding, in order to do that, because one size doesn't fit all, we really need to do a much deeper dive than we could do in a short period of time, to really understand what children and young people and their families want and need and how we can develop the market to get that. So it's difficult when we talk about demand because actually it depends on how we want to meet that need. So to say that there's a demand for this type of short break may only tell us that that's the number of children currently accessing that type of short break, doesn't tell us whether they would actually like to access something else or whether actually their parents would appreciate respite in a different form that worked better for them. So that's really what we're asking here, is just for, for an extension to what we've got so that we can spend some more time really digging down into not just the numbers of children that might need short breaks, but what they want and what matters to them and what matters to their families. So apologies, that sounds like I'm not answering your direct question, but I think that's the work we want to do more of really, is understand the demand. But currently it's a framework, so we, you know, it's not block purchased, it's paid for as we use it from a framework, so yeah, I hope that helps.
Thank you, Council Don.
I think it's working now. Oh yours. Okay, thank you. It's a little bit of a comment and to say thank you to the team, as we know, as we've seen from the Children's Commissioner, that rise for demand for children's services and especially this kind of has never been greater, yet the funding just isn't coming through, so I want to congratulate and it does really feel uncomfortable, but we have to look at budgets, obviously, but when it comes down to it, if we don't get and support our families early on, the cost is so much higher and greater and they never get their childhood back, so I think that's something that we really do need, you know, to think about and I think especially looking at what works and never to just think one size fits all and this is it, because we've always done it this way, so I really congratulate, but I really would like it if we could, and I know you probably support me, is actually make our feelings known to government that this is majorly underfunded and nobody should be looking, we know what we can do to improve lives and it shouldn't be that the, the cost of somewhere else, but I, you know, but that doesn't mean that you're not evaluating your services, so I think that is great and I think the Ofsted actually proves that, so thank you.
Thank you, Council Don. In light of that, we will drop the letter from the committee, yeah, thank you very much, if everyone's all right with that. So, no more questions or comments on this paper? So the recommendation is that the Education, Children and Families Committee approves the following changes to the existing commissioning strategy for short breaks, an extension of the commissioning strategy for a period of 12 months to the 31st of March 2025 at an estimated value of £754,110, an increase in the budget capacity for short break services for now until the 31st of March 2025 at an estimated cost of £302,556 and the addition of transition services at an estimated value of £100,000, £10852, I've got there in the end. Are we, oh, Council Hayby.
I was just having a thought and this is following what Council Mohamed Marouf was saying, as a committee, is it worth knowing who the providers are before pushing it through? Or can we?
Meredith.
So, so in that sense, what you're, the commissioning process potentially will create, have different providers, so at the moment it's continuing with the people that we've currently got and that wouldn't change and it's about the children and young people. The future would potentially have a completely different, because what the ask might be, might be completely different, so what I anticipate might happen is that families come back and say, actually, the last thing we want is our nine-year-old to go to a short break home overnight, we want support in the house through direct payment and we also want to be able to go to the outdoor education provision on a regular basis. And so at the moment, we don't know what the future will be and that will be part of the process that we're going through, if that's okay?
No, that's good, thank you.
I'll just bring Sarah in for some legal advice.
Yeah, just to explain, the way that the constitution's set up, the focus for the committee and the decisions reserved here is what you spend your budget on and whether you want to spend that on providing services in-house or you want to do that going to the market. So this is asking you to extend the current commissioning strategy, which says that some of the provision at least will be in the market and that we continue to deliver the current type of respite and short break services but adding the transition services. The actual decision as to who those services are procured from is then an officer decision. Certainly don't want to prevent the committee having that information and Meredith said she's more than happy to share that, but it's the nature of the providers, who they are, isn't relevant to whether you extend this commission or not, that needs to be taken independently of that information.
Council Marouf.
I get that completely, but the point that I was trying to make is when you're bringing external providers into the council and we've seen examples of it across the country where they've gone wrong and they've not had the right checks, I know we do all these checks, but even doing all the checks, you can still end up in certain amounts of difficult situations and then it ends up with the politicians having to defend the fact that officers have actually done this and that is what concerns me. Not that I need you to tell me who they, who they are, we need to be assured that the people that we're getting provision from are people that we can rely on and we won't get this sort of negative feedback. I'm not saying we've got negative feedback, but when you read the press and see what's happening with other authorities, there's every likelihood that we may well fall into something like that and then, I know it'd be the Chair who'll have to stand up and defend it, not me, but even so, it's something that we need to flag up and that's what I'm agreeing with Council Hayby on.
Meredith, did you want to just come in on that and, or Joe, did you want to just?
So the current framework is in the public domain, the list of providers will be, is out there, really happy to also just, you know, to send you the link to that, to send you that information and very happy to spend some time with members on the contract management and performance process that we have in place, which is, is pretty robust, I have to say, particularly in this area, we've had resource in this area for some time, we've got some real skill and experience amongst commissioning officers and contract management officers, so really happy to share that, that information with you and equally, I know that our providers that we contract with would welcome, you know, interest and would be happy to entertain and show councillors, members of the committee, you know, what they do, yeah, I'm sure they'd be really happy to showcase that.
Thank you, Meredith. You are, okay. So in light of the responses to those questions, are we in agreement with the recommendations? Thank you very much, that's agreed. Okay, so now we go on to Agenda item number nine, which is Exclusion Prevention Alternative Provision, it is on page 63 of your Agenda Pack and Emma Bryant is coming, oh, you're not Emma. Definitely you're not Emma either.
Good night, Council Dale, I am now Emma Bryant, Jo Horrabin Director of Commissioners.
And that is definitely not Emma.
Definitely not Emma Bryant, Tim Armstrong, I'm Head of Access and Inclusion in Education and Skills.
Thank you.
So we're doing a double act here, so I'm here as the Commissioner of this service and Tim is here as, as my service delivery colleague who refers into this service, works with schools around this service and works closely with us, so hopefully we can comprehensively answer your questions that you may have. So the Exclusion Prevention Service, which we want to talk to you about recommissioning today, already exists and is currently delivered by Sheffield Inclusion Centre. What I'm gonna, I'm just gonna point out to you that in the report pack, for reasons best known to the report pack, we have included the report that came to committee in January of this year, which set out our approach to alternative provision. So the report which we're asking you to agree is 9.2. So apologies for any confusion. So apologies for any confusion, but you have been um, saved the bother of looking back to see what, what the strategy was that we agreed and the approach. And uh, I'm coming to you with a part of how we make that happen now. So apologies, I'm not sure quite how the second original report got included.
I think the original report was an appendix, Gem, and what's happened is they've got uploaded the wrong way around. So I apologize for that technical issue. So the, the report that is actually being spoken to is um, nine point two in your appendic, in your pack. So it looks like an appendix to the report, but it's actually the report that's under consideration.
Page seventy-seven. Yes, so apologies colleagues, then that, that explains it. Thank you, Sarah. Seventy-seven, seventy-seven, yes. No, sixty-three.
Has everybody found that page?
Six, the one on sixty-three is the one that we've, that has already been agreed by committee in January this year.
Okay, fire away then. Page seventy-seven, folks.
Yeah. Um, so uh, the, uh, this report is um, to request approval to uh, go ahead and commission a new um, exclusion prevention service um, from April twenty twenty-four. So as I said, we've already got an exclusion prevention service in the city that's delivered by Sheffield Inclusion Centre. Um, and that service ends uh, at the end of March next year, twenty twenty-four. Um, and that current service has had a really positive impact on preventing exclusion, as you'll see from the paper. Um, uh, that, what, that, sorry, approximately ninety percent of children in receipt of the service so have actually been prevented from being excluded on a permanent basis from their school. So that's having a really positive impact. Uh, but through the new commission, we're aiming to do more of what works based on, you know, um, our evaluation of the service uh, and working with colleagues in Tim's team. Um, and to address some of the gaps that we feel over time have emerged over the course of the existing current contract, such as a lack of full-time alternative provision to ex, to prevent exclusion. So this proposal is aligned with the citywide alternative provision model discussed uh, in January and at the start of, of this uh, um, of this section. And also with the wider inclusion strategy. Uh, the new provider will be expected to make sure that they work with children, family and school to create really successful interventions that enable the child to be successful in their home school. So we're really keen that this is about supporting children to belong. So we've used, we use the term inclusion, but we really mean we want children to belong in their family, in their hu- uh, home, in their school, in their community. So the aim here of the exclusion prevention service, which is a bit mealy-mouthed sounding, is really to support children to get back into the school they belong in, that is the right school for, for them. There is a really tight timeframe for us to ensure that the new commission is in place for April twenty twenty-four. Um, and the tender process is planned to get underway from October, so from um, next week. Uh, so I'm really happy to answer any questions, but I'm, I'll leave it there. This is a, again, an example of us moving in the right direction towards our, um, the aim set out in our inclusion strategy. Um, and it's one small part of a really big spectrum of support, both to schools and to children and to families.
Thank you. I think councillor Marufo wanted to ask a question, but I think it might just be a good point to highlight why we're doing this at this point. You said it's already been provided, but I don't think you're really clear on the fact that the current provider has given notice on the commi, on the contract.
Correct.
Yes, the current provider is Sheffield Inclusion Centre. They are working hard to improve their provision. Um, the head teacher's been working for a number of years to improve the provision as a school. The Inclusion Centre's main commission is for children who've been permanently excluded from schools. This is a additional contract they've had for, that's developed for a few years, but they feel that they need to focus on their main mission of improving the education that they've got in place, which is why they've given notice.
Councillor Marufo.
Uh, thank you, Chair. Uh, the, the, the page that's concerns me quite a lot really, is it's quite alarming, page eighty-five. Four point one three, four point one four, four point one five and four point one six. Um, in particular around uh, BME children. And the percentage in this city is really high in terms of exclusions. And there has been very little change since twenty twenty-two and twenty-three. That's the observation. Uh, the question is, uh, we seem to be out of kilter completely with the other local authorities on this. Uh, when you look at four point one four. Uh, and in particular, um, when you look at the percentages and the percentages of population in the city, especially around the white, gypsy Roma, eleven point four percent uh, white and uh, uh, black Caribbean, seven point nine percent. These percentages are completely out of kilter with the population here. And I do know you'd be addressing it, but the reason for asking the question is to give you the chance to highlight what you're actually doing to address these issues, if I may.
So if I, I'll, I'll sort of briefly start and say that um, the requests that we've got uh, here in front of you today is, is that as part of that recommission, that we are looking expressly for um, a provider that can directly support and has some existing specialism and uh, and expertise and track record in supporting in particular um, our Roma community, who clearly are overrepresented in, in this cohort. I'm gonna ask Tim if he'd like to speak to the broader point about how we're addressing this in terms of ensuring all children belong and feel they belong.
So I think the, what our data shows us is exactly that point, that children from certain demographics, particularly the Roma community, are overrepresented in the ways that they will miss out on a mainstream educational um, provision. So it's uh, whether they are permanently excluded, there's a high percentage of that community within our permanent exclusions, but also absence and various other um, uh, reasons why they're not in school and not in education. Um, and so we need to deal with that as, uh, take, take the right approach with that. There's been a um, group of head teachers in particular trying to, to push forward on this. Um, in locality B, so that's the north east of the city. Um, uh, there's um, workers across the council looking at it as the cha, a challenge because it, it isn't just, there's a group that aren't choosing to behave the way that's expected. Um, that we've got a community who are not receiving the right support in its broadest sense. And I'll give an example. We met with um, the chief exec of one of our local multi-academy trusts to talk about why various parts of her community weren't attending, expecting in all honesty to have, oh, it's behaviour, it's SEN, it's all sorts of things. She talked about bedbugs. She talked about the litter on the street. She talked about the environment that those families live in, eating um, uh, food that's unhealthy and getting sick and not being in school. And so we've got to look at what's the challenges there. So there is a group that's been working to try and address the broader issues because we can say, come to school, comply with the expectations. But if children aren't able, enabled to come to school and, and be included and feel like they belong in that environment and able to get there, we nev, that's never going to work. So it's a much bigger system leadership approach that's needed to try and support that community, which is um, uh, massively overrepresented in, in the areas of risk that we have. As, as Joe said, as part of this commission, um, and in part because what we're currently seeing is we're seeing a number of young people from the Roma community accessing the current provision. We want to look at what's the expertise there to support that community, to understand, make sure we're hearing the voice of those young people working with them in their community to try and ensure that they can belong in their education system successfully.
If I may come back, Chair. No, thank you, thank you for that explanation, but it seems to be a wider story here, doesn't it really? Not just uh, students not attending. That is the wider environment that they actually live in, that's also causing the issue as I read it from yourself, uh, talking about it. Uh, but equally, uh, we've got this as a, as a major issue and I would like it to be flagged up within, within the, the recommendation, something that we need to be addressing even more urgently. Uh, and just picking up from what councillor Dunn said earlier, is these children only have one childhood. And uh, if we, if we're not being able to support them uh, in the right way, then clearly we, we, we're neglecting our duties. I'm using neglect, neglect as, as a harsh word here, but that's not what I mean. It's meant in the sense that there will be a, a comeback on this because it causes other issues that will follow on from this. So I know you're addressing it, but maybe it needs to be prioritized a little bit higher than where it is now. Not, not that I'm saying that you've not prioritized it, maybe we need to give it a little bit of a steer here. That's all I'm saying, Chair.
Councillor Marufo, you were proposing an amendment to a recommendation.
Yes, that, that we do look at bringing this higher on the agenda in terms of priority.
Do you want to give us some wording for amendment?
Um, that immediate action will be taken to, to look at the discrepancies in terms of um, a significant overrepresentation of the BME community, something like that.
Um, so I, I, I'll leave um, Councillor Dale around the, the, the recommendation and the, the changes to the wording. Um, what I would say is that I agree, um, that we, I think collectively the committee uh, would agree that we need to be looking at this and are looking at this as a matter of urgency. There are two elements. Uh, so one is around the um, race equality um, work. And if you uh, remember, um, we are um, looking at, uh, ensuring that we have an action plan which we are signed up to um, as a committee um, about how we're address, addressing race equality, um, particularly um, in uh, children and family services and our education um, services as well. And that's coming to the next committee. Um, the other um, element which um, both Tim and Joe um, referred to is uh, something that we're, we're talking about, which is a belonging framework, which gives us an overarching um, conversation about how we ensure children and young people um, belong and, and uh, Joe talked about it, belonging in um, your family. And again, uh, we, we've shown that we're good, that we're children. Um, uh, in other authorities are potentially uh, away from their families. We're good at maintaining um, family um, connections and giving the right support at the right time, that we're making sure that children and young people are in their local schools. That's not so, um, uh, that, that, that's a bit more jarring at the moment um, within Sheffield. Um, making sure that children are in their local communities and really respected within their local communities and part of the decision-making and that they are very much seen as that new generation within Sheffield. And from that will also come those elements which are absolutely about how do we make sure that uh, we are addressing the issue of the high number of permanent exclusions? How are we addressing the issue of the number of children who are educated other than, uh, who are outside of education? All of those things we've got strategies for. We need to really be addressing this as a system and as a place. It's, it does, it's not held in one, one specific area. Um, but we know that um, also the data that we're seeing is helping us making sure that refining what we're doing as a system and how we do it as well. Um, but that, I don't think that, that stands in, in the way of any recommendation changes that you, you wish to make.
In fact, I know, I know, sorry, I know everybody's popped and rattled. Go on, do you want to skip?
I'm, I'm absolutely fine with that because I think what you've touched upon there, which is, what, what I'm concerned about is we have a lot of students here uh, from, uh, from the community that were raising huge concerns that we are not taking them seriously. And then we get a report like this, which is, is honest and is telling the truth, which is the fact that we, we, we are, we are high on the percentages. And not to flag it up and not to say that we should raise it as a, as an issue as a committee. For me, it sounds completely wrong and contradictory that we sat there with these people and said, we will address these issues and, you know, we will be judged by it. And then the first time we get the opportunity to do something, uh, we, we, we sort of put it behind in the cl, uh, the headline of that we, we're dealing with this issue as part of the race equality uh, part of the, I'm, I'm open to other members speaking on this, but I just feel that, I feel uncomfortable that we made that pledge to them. Uh, I'm not so much interested in making an amendment here. I'm just raising it as a, as an issue.
If I can just draw it back in, I will bring everyone else back in again, having just read the summary of the proposal as well. So the, the recommendation is actually for this committee to approve um, the recommissioning of the exclusion prevention alternative provision for, to an external provider. We could um, be reassured that we would look for an external provider with expertise and a track record in working with young people from communities less served. Um, if that would be, um, I don't think we have to put in a recommendation, we can if you like. Um, but I think we need that reassurance that when we are looking for a commission, it is with an organisation that have got a track record in working with some of our most formidable young people that, from communities that are less served than, than others. Um, which I think you, you did allude to uh, with regards to organisations that are already working. So I will, we'll come, we'll come to a final, I'll let everyone else speak if that's all right, and then we'll come to a final decision at the end, if that's right. So first of all, Joe, I'll bring you in and then I've got councillor Dunn.
It was just very quickly to say that, um, first of all, absolutely happy to include something, you know, more specific in the recommendation because that is, that, that's our intent. Um, and that's why we've articulated what we have in the report and I, I absolutely agree. And we'll take that back to colleagues as well in terms of how we present recommendations and how we draw out more explicitly our intentions to address, um, you know, the deep-rooted inequality in the city. So thank you for that, for that point. Um, and I just to say that in terms of this being a sort of a, a system-wide challenge that we face and speaking to Tim's point about health and Meredith's point about wider wellbeing as well. Um, we are working um, as part of the Children and Young People's Delivery Group for the city with colleagues across health and the voluntary sector through the Children and Young People's Delivery Group of the Health and Care Partnership in the city. Um, and one of the priorities um, this year and I suspect into next year is around inclusion uh, and specifically addressing racism. Um, so I think, you know, just to give that assurance that in terms of that systemic commitment, I think it is, it is there in our approach to children and people with partners as well.
Thank you. Councillor Dunn.
Sorry. Oh, sorry. Yeah. Yeah. I thought that wasn't. Is that better? Okay, thank you. Um, the points that councillor, that you made are really valid. But I think they are covered in items four point one on page eighty-six where it does break down. Especially when you see, and one of the questions that I wanted to ask about was that, you know, it says on item four point one point one five is that ninety point two percent of the children have actually got SEN. And you, so this is something that probably has been around in the family a lot, you know, kind of an awful long time. And we know in absolutely right councillor Marufo is, is that this has to be tailored because how families live and how communities solve and resolve are all different. And people want to be treated as individuals, so you're absolutely right. And we need to know because we are a Children and Families Committee. So I would like this linking, do you know, in how we are doing that support earlier on in the families, especially when we're looking at item four point one six, which is about the trauma-informed. Very much we're focusing on, do you know, but there's a reason why children are like they, you know, when, when things are happening. So I, you know, really do need this specialised provision and I've been there. However, I would like this linking with how we are getting in earlier with earlier intervention and how we're supporting the whole family. The cycles do not keep on repeating because uh, that does happen as I know only too well. But I just want to put some, do you know, that I think it is covered in there. Not in quite the detail, but I think it is cross-reference, but a really important part of the debate. And, you know, just for the public so they know that we are aware and we as a committee in the council are really trying to do that. But I would like to know how this links with the family support and the.
Joe.
So I, I absolutely agree that there's a, there's a long journey before a young person. Often, there's a very long journey before a young person comes to meeting um, to access exclusion prevention support. Um, and just to reassure that the belonging framework that, that we are working on will be looking at, you know, how we support belonging, you know, from the earliest point. Because you're right, to start talking about belonging at the point of exclusion from school. talking about belonging at the point of exclusion from school, we've missed something, haven't we? So just to reassure on that. And actually, we have a, this week, we have, I think it's on Friday, but don't quote me, I can send the details round because I'm sure you'd be welcome to attend, though I know everyone's very busy. We have a trauma-informed practice conference for head teachers in the city this week. So it is something that we take really seriously. And we absolutely recognise that schools need support with this. And that's part of our role to support.
Thank you. Just on that, I'll bring Tim in, but just on that, I'll be at the event on Friday with Meredith. But every meeting I've been to this week, whether that be health, education, local authority, voluntary and community sector, we are all on the same page. And I think it's just going to be a process where we now need to, we're changing the way in which we're working. There's going to be a lot more co-production, a lot more collaboration. And I'm feeling rather more confident than I have done historically about us all, you know, really pushing the agenda of children, young people and their families right to the very top and ensuring that we're doing it from, like we, you know, from pre-birth, ensuring that families have got the support that they require when they need it, which is easily accessible. Tim, oh, sorry, Jane.
I just want to come back and say, really welcome that. And I know that I've seen that in my own ward. Do you know, it's really getting the trust of families to trust services, trust authority. But we're here to help your family, not to break up a family. And I think that is a really difficult narrative to get across because historically it hasn't so. But I know I've seen amazing work in my ward. And it's still a journey, but we are on that road where people are beginning to trust us.
Tim, did you want to go?
Yeah, just to reiterate the point that this is part of a much, much bigger system, isn't it? So this is about a commission for, that we've seen being successful. We've actually just looked at the numbers again from last year, 86, 85% of children who went through our primary and secondary inclusion panel, who look at those things weren't excluded. Some of those young people come and access this. Some of those young people sadly do end up excluded and end up in the pupil referral unit at the inclusion centre. This is part of a broader picture of alternative provision that we presented in January this year. And before that, there's a lot, a huge amount of work happening, working with schools, everything from setting a trauma-informed approach and creating the right culture within schools, which is part of the belongings framework, so that we get the culture right, to recognising where are all of our gaps? What are the things that we need in place? So I think it's really important to place this in the context of this is part of an enormous jigsaw that we need in the city and why what we want to do as part of this commission is broaden it because we've seen the success that prevents children going that bit further down the trail of not feeling like they belong in their local community. So it's really essential that we have the entirety of the jigsaw together.
Thank you. Councillor Basra.
Thank you for this. How I'm understanding, again, it's all with this piece of work, you've actually identified some gaps to tackle those and reduce those gaps. And this is where this new exclusion prevention service that you're actually looking at putting in. And my understanding was, looking at, you know, the diversity and everything within Sheffield and the demographics, you've already mentioned certain communities not receiving the right support, which is probably one of the reasons why this is happening. So straight away, my understanding was this is what you're asking for to be able to get on with this particular piece of work, which has been working, to try to tackle that and try to get those young people the right support at the right time so that we can reduce those. There was, yeah, and I think how I'm understanding, and I've read pieces, what you've mentioned, it's actually doing exactly what is needed. And councillor Jane Dunn and Marouf highlighted those, which you have mentioned in there. And I think it's about, just like the first piece, working with those families. But I'm seeing that in this paper and also what Tim's just mentioned and highlighted. So it's giving me reassurance that, you know, the work and whoever we do have for this new centre, they would have the expertise. And you've kind of like highlighted a lot of this stuff, which is quite reassuring, that people out there feel that the services that they are going to be tapping into or who their child will be going to, they do understand their needs, the cultural needs or whatever background they come from. And they are in expert hands to be able to take them through that journey. So I'm really pleased with the way it's being presented and how you're actually dealing with this. I know sometimes we're bringing it up, these committees, it's quite useful for us to know, to be able to, when we're working with the constituents and people and families out there, we can reassure that, you know, this is what's happening. And where there is any shortfall, we will be only raising it to support you. So, yeah.
Thank you for that. Councillor Basra. Councillor Herbie.
This is for the committee. So are we putting in an amendment or asking for recommendations to change?
I will double check with councillor Marouf if he wants an amendment. Are we all right with the recommendations as they are?
I'm fine. I'm fine with the recommendation on the proviso that is underpinned by the fact that any new provider has an awareness that this is where we need to be targeting. The point I'm trying to make here, and I keep trying to make here, is not that I'm not in support of what you're saying here, is just that we have made a pledge to the community that we will look at this at the first opportunity we got. And this is the first opportunity we've got. Maybe it's in there, but it's lost in the sort of pages. And it's only us who reads all these thoroughly, I'm assuming, from page one to whatever. But if it's highlighted a little bit more, then I don't think there's a need for an amendment here. It's just an awareness to say, this is where we will be targeting first. Because I really do feel strongly that I can't sit here and not highlight this, especially bearing in mind, and I keep repeating this, that we committed to the young people that came here, that we will address these issues. And that's all I want to say here.
So should we put that as an amendment?
I'm not going to propose an amendment because councillor, unless you want to propose an amendment.
Yeah, unless, yeah, let's propose an amendment to the wording. We could say with everything as it is, however, a tailored approach to kids with, or BAME kids and kids with SEN. So whatever way you want to put the wording into that, you can do it. We can give you 10 minutes and I can try and write one up.
What special focus within those areas?
I mean, I did just write that we would have an expectation that any commission would be from a, basically from an organisation that was the expertise and track record of working with young people from communities less served. So whether that be SEN, children from SEN backgrounds, from BAME backgrounds or whatever, I think, if you'd be happy with something along that thing.
Yeah.
Because then we're not too, we're not narrowing it too much because it's quite broad groupings and everything there.
And that would be within this committee because that would be part of setting the commission strategy. That's the sort of specification you're wanting. So that you could certainly add that wording at the end. So you would be proposing an amendment that does need a second, that your expectation is that the commission will be...
So can I propose that wording then? Is everybody happy with that wording?
I was just going to say, I'm fine with that.
Okay, no one wants a second of that then. Second or third, do you want to second it? Okay. Yeah, so, yeah. Are we all all right with that then? Fantastic. So we've stuck to our commitment.
I just feel like we've been speaking about it, bouncing back and forth.
Yeah, no, it's fine. We've got to get it right now, haven't we, at this point in this meeting? So it's been recorded, it's been in minutes, and it will be in that recommendation as well. Is that all right?
Yeah, perfect.
So when you come back, which commission will be checking? Thank you very much. So we're moving on now to agenda item number 10, which is Tim again. It is the Tim Armstrong Show today. And this is a citywide approach to improving school attendance. Is this really on page 99?
It is actually on.
Oh, fantastic. Yeah, page 99 on your pack. Thank you.
Okay, so you have had the paper. And this paper's presented really to create the conversation as much as anything else around the challenges we face within the city. You've all had the opportunity to read it in advance. I would highlight, I suppose, a couple of key things. School attendance in Sheffield and nationally is a challenge, is a problem. Children are not going to school. And we need to understand the reasons why and help support them back into education. Anybody who's listened to the news this morning, I was driving down to an event with my team, listening to the news where we're hearing another example of a report talking about children who aren't going to school and the many varied reasons why. Interestingly, the next article was about the cost of living crisis and mental health. And so we need to be aware that across the country, there are substantial challenges where children are going to school less than they were before and not as much as we would like them to be going. In Sheffield, school attendance has always been a substantial challenge. Children haven't been going to school as much as we would like them to. And many, many occasions have been tried to try and address the underlying causes for that. I used to work in an education welfare service within a previous local authority. And the term in that local authority was where kids wagging it, i.e. where they're bunking off school, heading behind the bike sheds, having a cigarette and telling the parents they were going. That's not the situation that we face as a nation and as a city in terms of school attendance. The situation that we face is that there are many varied reasons for children not going to school. And part of our belonging framework is to try and say, we want our children to feel like they want to go to school. I remember when I was a kid, the times when I didn't want to go to school were the times when I didn't belong or didn't feel like I belonged. The times when I did were when I felt like I was part of the group, when I'd found my tribe of my group of people. And I'm sure we all felt the same in similar ways. So within Sheffield, we are struggling with school attendance. It is a substantial challenge. Nationally, you'll see the data within the report, but we are below national average. We used to be right at the very bottom of local authority league tables. We've actually moved up them slightly. I'm not sure that that's something to necessarily celebrate because I think it's actually that everybody has got worse. But we are doing a lot of work to try and address the reasons for children not being in school and working hard on that. We've worked with the DFE and with their attendance adviser, who has said, everything that we've done from our self-assessment in terms of attendance activity is what she would expect us to do. In fact, she's recommending we talk to other people. And I've even had the DFE contact me recently to talk about some of the things that we're doing. But it's still not good enough for our children. We want our kids in school. We want them to receive an education. We want them to access learning. So my teams and teams around us are working hard to try and address some of the barriers and working with individual families to understand why individual children aren't going to school. But there is a much broader picture that we need, which is system leadership around school attendance. We set off a school attendance campaign in academic year 21, 22, as part of the one-year plan, where we made a commitment to reduce exclusions in all forms. Hopefully, you've seen on the back of some buses, hopefully you'll shortly see next, outside the parks, banners that say, Every School Day Matters, and how individual children's attendance counts. We are working to the new government guidance around school attendance, and we're hitting all the triggers that they're expecting of us. 98% of schools last year had termly meetings with our inclusion and attendance team to talk about the children that they're trying to address. And we're trying to address the barriers for, but it's still not enough in terms of children aren't going to school. We're working hard on that. This year, as part of our attendance campaign, we're building on the attendance charter that we developed within the city, working with anchor organisations. We got tentative sign-up at the time, but we don't believe that we've really maximised that work from all of our partner organisations. So for example, we are working with the Children's Hospital about how we address medical appointments and children missing whole days of school to travel across the city to the Children's Hospital for an appointment. So we're working on some of those things in the attendance charter. But to build on that, we're asking all of our colleagues, all of our employees, all of our partners, to think about what three things they can do individually and as teams to improve attendance in the city. The purpose of this report is to raise these challenges and give committee the opportunity to scrutinise any activity that they think and make recommendations going forward. And I would be happy to take questions based on that. I'll slightly get off my soapbox, but ultimately, if our kids aren't in school, they aren't going to make good progress into adult life and they're not going to be successful. And so we need to, as a city, take that seriously and work to address it together.
Thank you, Tim. I've got a number of people wanting to ask questions, but I'm just going to take privilege of the chair because I've got a bursting question I need to ask. And that is, we're being asked to commit to play a role as system leaders in improving schools, school attendance, and to commit to continuing to support activity to improve school attendance, which has members who are committed to children in our city, I'm sure that we'll all be happy to do. Having been in a number of meetings this week regarding children with all different services, I need to ask about the buy-in from schools, actually. And having met with a lot of parents recently about the children's experiences in schools, which is preventing them from going to school, so things around their environment in which they're in, the curriculum in which they're offered, and about them not feeling that they are, that they fit, or that the pressure that they're under is preventing them. I think nationally, we've seen education change, haven't we? And there's a lot more pressure on, you know, getting the grades and, you know, it's far more serious than whenever I were at school. It's kind of all about those GCSEs and A-levels. And there's a lot of pressure on young people, particularly when they move from primary to secondary. You know, I've had a mum whose child went missing on Monday because he hid and wouldn't go. And he was absolutely hysterical. So because of the environment that he was going into, it's not something that's comfortable for him because he's under too much pressure. So I think, I'm sure we would all commit to doing this. And like you say, you're working with health. And things are different now in education in that we've got lots of different providers of education across Sheffield. And I think, do we have the buy-in from providers of education, whether they be national academies, local academies, maintained schools, in order for us to be able to? Because I'm assuming that a lot of this is at second, a lot, I mean, it's not only at secondary. You know, we have children missing from education and what you might call wagging it in primary. But it just, is it themed? Is it, are we aware of kind of which parts of the city is it worsening? You know, what young people, which, you know, demographic are young people is it impacting on? There's lots there for you to answer, I suppose. But it's like, what, do we understand what it is? That for some, have we spoken to young people to ask them why they're not going?
So there's about 1,001 questions in that, isn't there? I think, first thing I would say is that I believe our schools come to work to educate kids and help children make progress. I think we have some fantastic head teachers, staff, workers across our city who are committed to saying, how do we support children in school? But we know that that works best when it works in partnership. We know that a school on its own is not going to be able to ensure that every child can come to school every day successfully. So our schools want to work with us. I think we have schools that want to get alongside us and recognise the role they've got to play. One of my team was at a training session with Learn Sheffield last Friday, which was a full day of leadership looking at school attendance as part of school improvement plans. So our schools are committed and telling us that they are committed to supporting children in being in school, but want to work together with us, with us as a local authority, with our parents, with children and people, with our health colleagues, with the police across the board. I think the challenge we face is that it isn't one issue. So I referenced wagging it because that used to be the reason. Kids don't go to school because they're wagging it, they're bunking off behind the bike sheds. That's not the issue. The issues are broad and varied. The level of mental health and emotional wellbeing in cities is huge. And not just within children, within parents who are struggling. There was a recent report that came out, I think last week, that's the first piece of national research since pandemic in terms of hearing parent voice as to why they think their children aren't going to school. And it isn't about what parents are saying to that report is it's not, well, we're at home, so we'll just let the kids stay off on Friday. It's the breadth of challenge. It's the fact that children have changed. I've just come from a session where we've talked about since 2010, the cohort of children coming through. We've got a whole new world in terms of screens in front of them. And what does that mean for how their neurons work? Although all the science has been very useful this morning. So we know that issues are around family mobility and where children live. We had an example that we talked about where a family who's made homeless, well, that stops the family going to school. So how do we address that? How do we make sure that our systems, our processes consider the impact on education? We know it's about anxiety and mental health and mental wellbeing of children and parents. And not just, we need more children to access CAMHS, but across the board, what's it look like to feel safe? to access CAMHS, but across the board, what's it look like to feel safe and secure in a, in a school environment? We know that families have got their own needs in terms of challenges. And we know that our responses sometimes are less about how do we help this child to belong, and more about how, what are we expecting of the child? And I can understand schools' challenge in that. If you've got a thousand children and one who's causing the substantial disruption and risk of harm to others, then you have to think about all of the thousand, including the one. It's our job to think about all of the thousands, but especially the one. So I think, to answer the question, we have a, parents who are telling us the reasons nationally. Young people tell us they want to be in school, they want to enjoy school, they want to enjoy their education. But we know that the breadth of reasons behind it is what we need to address in totality. There are no quick wins on this, unfortunately, in terms of, and eat a silver bullet. But there are lots of things that we can do in partnership to say, actually, we're committed to this, whether it's through our, our, working with our constituent, your constituents, to say, how can we help you ensure your child's in school? How can we create a culture where school is prioritised, where we talk about how education is the most important thing for young people? How can we create a city that is absolutely committed to children feeling like they belong and they belong in the local school?
Thank you, Tim. councillor Dunn.
Right, right side this time. Thank you, Tim. I have seen the signs up, and I do remember this, do you know, from many years ago, when we put, I would like to know, on page 102, you've put the reasons. On page 101, we've got some stats about nationally. Then on page 102, 1.3, we've got the reasons for absence there. And they're not, I'd like to know the stats behind that as well, because I think that might help, you know, especially if we're trying to look at, touching on what we were talking about earlier, because school absence, it can't be in isolation. Kids start missing school, and then that is why we end up where we've just been discussing earlier. I would also like to raise a very controversial point, but so don't be surprised, is academyisation. Schools used to be at the heart of communities, and academies do great work, and I'm not underestimating that. However, it's very hard for me in my ward to get them to help do youth clubs and other things. So school was seen as somewhere where not only did you learn, but where you had fun and where the families were coming in. So I think there is something about taking that, school is where, almost like punishment, you have to go. It used to be great fun, and they do do things, but I don't think it is as cross the board as it used to be. And I do think that is one of the challenges that we fe, that we faced. So I'd just like to put that out. I know that's something that we can't solve, but I would like to know through Learn Sheffield, when we go back, if collectively, if we see there is a common denominator, is there something that they do? Because I do know the will is there. I have been in those meetings, and I know that will is there. So I would like to know, do you know, on that. I just think it's something we're desperately.
A campaign in and of itself is not going to make a fourteen-year-old who's struggling with the way that they access education to go to school. What it's intended to do is to raise a much broader awareness across the city about the importance of school attendance. We know that nationally, that's being raised. So the Children's Commissioner has raised that nationally in terms of it. She was pushing, actually, what we want is every child to go in the first week. What we know is that fifty-five percent of children who don't go in the first week of term are likely to become persistently absent during the year. So we've, what we've, and that's a national figure, not a local figure. What we've, what we've done is tried to create a campaign that tries to create some momentum that says, attendance in Sheffield is important, because I don't think we have that culture as embedded as it needs to be. It doesn't become everybody's priority. It is a strategic priority for us as a council, I believe. I think it is something that we need to be focusing on. And actually, just raising awareness about why it's important is the reason why we went with Every School Day Matters, because what we want is parents to see it, employers to see it, partners to see it and go, yep, actually, what is it that I'm doing that I can have an impact? So part of the ask around what three things that we've got as part of that campaign this year is to say, go that step further. Yes, it matters, but what can I do to try and help it in the way that I work?
Thank you. Just a number of other questions. I do know that the data tells us that out of the hundred and fifty-plus LAs, we are quite, quite low, we are ranked quite low in regards to primary level and, and secondary level. Do you think that the parents of Sheffield don't care about school attendance? Or do you think there are other, other matters at play here?
I think, I think that's, would be an incredibly sweeping statement to say that the parents of Sheffield don't care about school attendance. The feedback that we know nationally, we've not done local research in the same way, but national feedback says that families are struggling with their children's education. I think I've articulated some of the many reasons why children aren't going to school. It isn't that every parent's saying, I don't care. There are multiple reasons why children aren't going to school and aren't accessing their education, but we need to address all of them. So I, I'm not by any way, shape or form saying the parents of Sheffield don't care about education.
Thank you, Tim. That answered that question very well. And just one final thing. I, I hope many parents and children are watching this webcast. What would you say, in one sentence, to them in regards to the importance of attendance?
I would say that attendance at school enables children to have, work towards a successful future. So we need to work together to ensure that children can access as much of their education as possible and come and talk to us if they're struggling, work with their school, talk to their school's attendance lead. Every school has an attendance lead, and work together in partnership to help a child get into school. That was more than one sentence, I realise.
Thank you, Tim. That was a long sentence, but appreciate it.
Councillor Hayley.
I was just going to pick on something you said earlier, that linked to what councillor Dunn was saying, which I find very interesting. You mentioned something about neurons, and you mentioned how school used to be fun and how that culture's changed. Maybe there could be something tailored to looking into that and how social media's lowered attention spans, where the information why I used to go to school, for example, history that I was looking forward to, you swipe three times on TikTok, you'll have a hundred eighty-four-part TikTok thread about history, for example. So has the, like councillor Dunn was saying, has the intention, intention and the excitement and the fun in school changed? And how can we as a council and as a committee do something new which looks into that and thinks, okay, are we still teaching certain things the same way we used to? However, the reward system's kind of changed for that, if you know what I mean?
I'm going to let Meredith answer that one, but I think we need to plant the tree to do some educational reform, if that, if that's what we're going to be doing. But Meredith, Val?
Yeah, and I don't necessarily disagree that there may well need to be educational reform. I think that there is something about us having an agile curriculum for the people or for, for the people of the future and what, what is required for the future. It's not in that sense in our gift, though, as either a local authority or as a committee. It is in your gift as members of political parties to make sure it's on your political party's agenda, particularly as we potentially go, well, we know we're going into a period of, of elections, so.
Yeah, I think maybe as a committee, we can look at that and have conversations in collaboration. But it was something interesting to note. I know there's obviously a lot more main key points as to why children are missing school, but it's going to be an interesting project for this committee to look into. Thank you.
I was going to propose, moving forward, that I have some more people that may be doing some workshops and some sessions with partners and feeding in our casework that we quite often get from, from young people. So I've got councillor Horner next, and then councillor Hussain and councillor Bashar.
Yeah, I mean, if, if kids are bunking off to, 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 to smoke, it's certainly not cigarettes, it's going to be vapes. And I think that's not a small problem for education as a whole, because as we all know now, or we're beginning to know, we don't actually know what's in vapes and what effect they're having on mental health, on people's attitudes. I also think that there, there is a question about school places in themselves, and to what effect parents and children not getting this school of their choice is having on attendance. I soon need to go, not yet, but at four o'clock, I've got to go to a group briefing about bus cuts. I have a feeling that might have an effect on educational attendance. You know, we might have things up on the bus saying it's good to go to school, but if we're about to lose the bus that somebody gets on to go to school, that just might have an effect on, on school attendance. So I think, you know, there are so many different things in this question. But we cannot be proud as a committee, and I don't say this in a criticism very big, we cannot be proud that we are so low nationally in attendance. It's not, you know, everybody has the same problem, but why are we so, so far down in the league? And we couldn't get much lower in the league, could we? We're not going to get relegated. But the league we're in, if, if there were two divisions, we wouldn't be, we wouldn't be in any prospect of getting into the first division for a very long time. And so we need to take this very seriously, and we need to encourage everybody, and as councillor Dunn said earlier, about, you know, what, what people are missing. And you're absolutely right, the campaign's a good one. Every school day is important, but we have to understand all these different things. Technology's been mentioned. There are so many factors, but we have to work hard on this, because we are, my colleague, councillor Whittaker was telling me earlier about, I think it's a tweet of the Police and Crime Commissioner, about the link between crime and those who are not at school. So it's a wider issue for society, and that's why I started with the point about the bus cuts, because we as a committee need to be saying to colleagues in other committees, when things happen, that will have an effect on, on education. And that's, and that's just one of them.
Thank you. This has sparked a fabulous debate. I'm mindful that I've got other people who want to speak, so I'm completely convinced that you're all absolutely committed to advocating and ensuring attendance is better. What I don't want to go down, though, is that rule of, if you don't go to school, you're going to end up in prison, because that was the narrative that does not encourage young people to go to school. Having an experience of that, actually, having spoken to someone, when a education welfare officer arrived and said, if you don't go to school, you're going to end up in prison. There was no incentive there whatsoever for that young person to then go to school, because he needed to know what he were going to, what it was, what positive things were going to happen by attending school, and not what the negative things were going to be. So I think when we talk about this as a, as a campaign and as a, when we work in partnership, we've got to really, I know there's got to be carrot and stick, but I'd like to say a bit more carrot than stick, if you get, if you get me drift. So I've now, sorry, Tim, did you want to come back on that? Because I've just got a few more.
Yeah, we just do, I, I suppose one of the things you're all pulling out is that there's a multifaceted issues as to why children don't go to school. So yes, it's absolutely true. Some young people are not going to school because the school place that we've been able to give them in terms of the commissioned places in the city is not close enough in what they want. That's not the case for all of them. Some will be transport. I suppose what I wanted to say is, all of you've talked about, and I realise that I didn't answer councillor Dunn's question, in terms of, in terms of local schools, I would encourage you as elected members to go and speak to the head teachers in your wards and say, talk to me about this. Tell me what the challenge is. Help me understand what your challenge is and what we can do about that. You know, very happy to work with others around that, but the head teachers would love to talk to you. They'd love you to come in and just say, tell, tell me it. Help me understand what the challenge is and what I can do to help.
Thank you for that. So I've now got councillor Hussain.
Thank you very much. I, I believe all schools in Sheffield, they have signed up to further this programme for attendance, because it's academies, I don't know the chain. It's hundred percent they have signed up, or they haven't. The other question, I believe parents care about the kids to go to school, definitely. I believe hundred percent of parents, they love the kids to have a bright future if they attend the schools. But personal experience, especially in North East, especially in my ward, parents struggle because they got kids, whether they are primary school or secondary school, secondary school, they have, they have grown up and they walk. But primary school kids, they can't attend because they got different school places. We are struggling. So that impact on attendance, have we got any plan to tackle that issue? Because, you know, siblings are not in same school, and parents, they don't drive, they are not going to be on time. If they are late, still it's going to be, impact on attendance, it's late, it's not on time.
Tim, I know you're going to answer this, but I'm just mindful that we're just being, the recommendation is for us just to be in support of, of this piece of work. And what I'm thinking is, a lot of questions that have been drawn out is, how are we going to do it? What information have we got? Where are we going with this? And I'm, I'm thinking that maybe after this meeting, we have a meeting of the committee, a workshop or a working group to focus in on that, so that we've got that more information. I think, like I said before, it's very clear that we're all very passionate about this, and we really want to do better. And I think the questions we're all asking now is about, well, how are we going to do that? And what are we going to do about it? So I think that might be a working group or a workshop for the committee to be able to commit to going out and speaking to those head teachers, to speaking to other partners in your communities, through your local area committees and all that sort of stuff. So would everybody be up for that, a workshop or working group to look at how we support this? So I'm just mindful that we're going down a, a whole hour, we're going to do it, rather than just being in support of it. But thank you. Nigat, did you have a question? I'm just going to be mindful of time. So if people can have questions and be quite succinct in what they're saying, thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. Fantastic in terms of what you've said so far. I'm not going to try and go into all of that, because there are a lot of the things that's been said and the reasons. Some that I pick up, you know, in terms of the attendance-wise, I think in the briefing that I attended, it was highlighted a lot, which from there, a lot of key things I took back, liaising with some of, hoping to liaise with some of those key people who were at the briefing. But some of the stuff that you've mentioned, I started doing that, engaging with local schools in my ward and trying to offer what I can do. But also the campaign itself, excellent idea with anything, I think, if, I mean, I, even though I'm around in the community, but you know, when you mentioned in the briefing in terms of certain things that are key and challenging, one was this attendance. I, I was thinking how best to actually raise the awareness, you know, even within my own community as well and other communities. So it was funny enough, I think, the week after or something, I saw a bus and the campaign, and that was really good, because it, it kind of like hit you, kind of thing. So a lot of families, like councillor Talib's mentioned, have shared concerns. There isn't probably a single parent who doesn't want the best for their children and, you know, the education side. But I think a lot of the things you've already identified and mentioned, I, I've picked them up as well, including transport, the spaces.
Councillor Bashar, do you have a question?
One of the questions I would say, or shall I, I'm just offering is to, I don't know if it's a question or thingy, but I'm willing to work with you to be, because with the community development skills in the community, I'm willing to work with you to highlight these issues in the community.
Thank you. I've got councillor Whittaker. It's okay, thanks, because they've been asked. Thank you. And councillor Maru.
There's a lot of why, why questions, and I'm not going to ask any whys anymore. Basically, all I'm going to say is that this is terribly important for the city, and I concur with the chair that we should take it as seriously as we possibly can and get together a working group to work with officers, because we can sit here and ask you loads of questions. And what I do thank you for is bringing this report to us with the honesty that you've brought it to us with. We're at the bottom of the league, we need to rise, and all of us need to work together. So I concur with the chair, a working group should be set up to work with the officers, to give them a steer and for them to give us a steer, to get us off the bottom of the league. That's all I'll say, chair. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Maru. So, Tim, you can come back, and then I'm going to go on to recommendation. Thank you.
So very, very happy to do some form of workshop. Can I, I may be overstepping here, but can I ask to give you some homework first, which is to go and talk to a couple of schools before that workshop, because that will give you that lived experience. Talk to some parents, talk to some young people, so that what would be fantastic is that if members can bring that voice from there, and to also ask your colleagues across, across the piece to do likewise and feedback, because that will help inform how we address this.
That's fantastic. Thank you, Tim. I'm sure we can all commit to doing that. So the recommendation for this item is that the Education, Children and Families Policy Committee commit to play a role as system leaders on improving school attendance across the city, working across Sheffield City Council and with partner organisations. and to commit to continue to support activity to improve school attendance. And that the committee will continue to work with officers, as we've just said, to agree further actions which it can take, which will positively impact on attendance outcomes in the city. Are we all in agreement? Thank you very much, thank you Tim. So our next item on the agenda is agenda item number 11, which is on page 121. It's the Commission of an Education Management System and I believe it's Andrew and Dominic. He emailed you earlier.
So it's Andrew Jones, Director of Education and Skills. I am the project sponsor for this, why I've come up to the front, but other than introducing myself, I'm going to let Dominic just do the explanation of this. But in essence, we have a management system that's already in place, it's coming to the end of its useful life and this is about permission from the committee to actually how we process, progress the procurement of a new system.
Thank you, Dominic Sleath, Head of Service, ICT and Digital Innovation. So this is a proposal to procure a system to support our education services. Over 30 services, over 500 officers are supported by our current system, which is provided by Capita. The Capita One system is due to come to at the end of its contract on the 30th of June 2025. It's a system that's vital for the work of education services. It holds records of every child in maintained schools and academies and other funded education settings. It's vital to carry out and report on our statutory duties such as send interventions, assessments and reviews. In order to prepare for this, we will need sufficient time to carry out procurement exercise alongside commercial services, but it will be led by education services supported by business change and IT and digital innovation. The aim is to procure a system which will be able to continue to carry out the current services provided by the Capita One system as a minimum, but it also gives us the opportunity to introduce more capabilities such as case management for SEND, which we don't currently have. This also presents an opportunity to reduce the total cost of ownership by selecting a system as a lower annual maintenance cost. There is an upfront cost of change and that will be factored into the business case. The work that we've carried out, looking at other systems, soft market testing, talking to other local authorities, demonstrates that we can get a system which will have an annual maintenance cost significantly lower than the system that we currently have. Our estimated payback time will be between four and eight years. And as such, we're looking to carry out a procurement exercise and commission a system for a period of up to 10 years to ensure payback. I think the information on, in paper is reasonably detailed, so I don't really want to go on much longer than this because I realise that this item is a bit more prosaic than some of the other more exciting items that the committee's heard. But at that point, I'm quite happy to take any questions.
Extremely important Dominic, if we don't get our record keeping and systems right, then where are we going to be? So yeah, very important. So does anyone have any questions on this paper? I know that myself, councillor Ralph and Maru have been briefed quite in depth on this. So the recommendation for this paper is that the Education, Children and Families Policy Committee approves the commission of an education system from an external provider for a period of 10 years at an estimated value of £4.3 million. Does everyone agree? That's agreed, thank you very much. So we're now on to agenda item number 12, which is the Start for Life Early Years Strategy. And we welcome back Marie, who, I think she's on Elastic Band, coming back to us, she just keeps coming back. But welcome and welcome back to Amy as well. Yep, this is on page number 149 in your packs.
So hello everyone, I will keep this quite brief because I know that I've taught you a number of times about this and you've all also been consulted on the final draft and thank you for taking the time to look at that. The purpose of the strategy is essentially because we've come to the end of our last strategy, which was the Great Starting Life Strategy. We did very well in terms of the achievements against the action plan for that strategy. But we've a lot going on in the city at the moment and nationally in terms of early years. Early years are very high profile, rightly so. There are changes to the early years foundation stage with the family hubs, with the, we were lucky to get trailblazer status as well for our family hubs. There's an awful lot going on in terms of infant mental health, et cetera. And our strategy needs to encompass all those new changes and make sure that we could collectively as a city, as an early years system and workforce, set out to support all those changes that need putting in place to be the best that we can for our children essentially. There are lots, there are an awful lot of things going on in terms of strategies and you'll see in the document, I think it's section B, the number of related elements to early years. Because each one of those strategies, policies, et cetera, has its own plans, its own regulations, we aren't having an action plan for the strategy this time, but what we are going to have is the performance outcomes and we will keep abreast of those performance outcomes, report those through a subgroup of the family hubs programme. Take that up through our early years partnership board and up to the health and wellbeing board. And we'll keep the inclusion task force, et cetera, abreast of those developments as well. So we'll be developing an early years dataset that'll support us to do that. We consulted very widely on the strategy, we sought views from parents and carers across the city through surveys, focus groups, we very much went to where people are. And we had a good turnout for our last early years event from professionals where we consulted with them. And also they took part in our focus groups and surveys as well. We will be repeating our early years event next spring and we would, at this point, like to invite you all to that. And we'll make sure that you get invited to that, we do really want to see people there supporting our early years cause. I want to keep it brief because I know we're against time, so if there's any questions.
Thank you, I've got a comment before we go on. But what I would like to do is thank everyone really who works in early years sector. We've just discussed our exclusion prevention and, you know, low attendance in schools. And we do know that, don't we, that if we start to work with families in those very early years, it really is with the children and the family and have that whole household approach to working with people, that that has an absolutely positive impact at the other end, at the very older end and the sharp end, as we call it. I think, again, we're going to be looking at our youth justice, discussing some of our youth justice stuff. And if we get it right at the very early years, I think, you know, historically in Sheffield, we've had a fantastic track record of that. And I would just like to really thank everybody working in the sector, officers that have worked on this strategy, the people that you've consulted with, because we know that currently it's very, very difficult. Government funding is just not funding the early years seriously enough. You know, it just feels very piecemeal at the moment and the direction is not going the right way nationally. Although the commitment from Sheffield, from the teams across the city, I know, having met everyone over a number of years, that the commitment from Sheffield is really there. So I'd really just like to thank you for your commitment and for all of the teams and all the people that you've spoken to, that the work that's gone into this and that we will keep championing the early years in Sheffield. Because it's absolutely, that's the fundamentals and that's really what we've got to keep getting right. So sorry for that, but I just needed to say that because I think it is absolutely really important. Does anyone have any questions? I know Marie's been to us quite a few times now and we've done lots of work on this. So if there are no questions or comments on your work, Marie, thank you. So the recommendation that is recommended that we as the committee consider the Start for Life Sheffield 2023 to 28 and agree its adoption as Sheffield's early years strategy for the next five years. Are we all in agreement? That's great, thank you, thank you for both coming and doing that. So next, we've got item number 13, which is, there it is. It says, says you're presenting this one, Meredith, or is it someone else?
The Youth Justice.
Yes, Youth Justice Overview Report. That's not Meredith. So this one is on page 253, this is our Youth Justice Overview Report. And if you'd like to introduce yourselves, that'd be great, thank you.
Hi, Sam Taylor, I'm the Service Manager for Youth Justice Service. So this is an item for noting and it's about raising awareness of the Youth Justice Service in Sheffield and adding context ahead of items 14 to 16. So the local authority does have a statute responsibility under the Crime and Disorder Act to have a youth justice service, excuse me. So we are Youth Justice Service and not the youth service, sometimes people get a little bit muddled. So we sit with under children and families. We work with children from the age of 10, make an assessment of the needs from those children on the cusp of entering the criminal justice system, all the way through to those children who are released and resettled into the community, having served a custodial sentence. We assess three domains of risk, so the likelihood of reoffending, the risk of serious harm and the safety and wellbeing of children. We're a multi-agency service and we have a number of funding partners, including probation, police, health and the local authority. We do have a three-year plan and the current plan is a 2225 plan that outlines our priorities. We have a statute responsibility to provide a number of provisions and the next three formal decisions are part of that provision that we have to deliver. That was my overview ahead of the committee's formal decisions.
So does anybody have any questions for Sam on this? Or shall we go straight into the item number 14 and 15 and take those together, is that all right? Okay, fire away Amy.
Okay, thank you. So the next three reports are all relation to statutory services that are part of our responsibilities around our youth justice provision as outlined by Sam and are part of our local plan. So the first one is to seek approval to commission a provider to deliver an appropriate adult service as part of a joint commission with the other South Yorkshire local authorities. The contract that we currently have is due to come to an end at the end of March next year. So this is a repeat, recommission, reprocurement process that we're seeking to undertake. So this service provides a pool of trained volunteers to support young people when they're being interviewed by police when suspected of carrying out a criminal offence. In lots of cases, a family member will advocate for that young person, but where that isn't possible, we need a service to provide that support for that young person and this is what the appropriate adult service is. So the decision that we are seeking is to commission a provider to work with Rotherham, Barnsley, Doncaster, with Sheffield as the lead commissioner of that service, to make sure that we've got provision in place from the 1st of April next year.
Thank you, does anyone have any questions on this one? No. So the recommendation is that the, this committee of the Education, Children and Families Policy Committee approves the commission of an external provider to deliver an appropriate adult service as part of a joint commission in Rotherham, Barnsley and Doncaster Youth Justice Services with an estimated cost of £351,540 to Sheffield City Council over a period of four years as set out in the report. Do we all, are we all in agreement? Thank you, that's agreed, would you like to go on to the next one, which is on page 267?
Yep, thank you. So the next recommendation is that we are seeking approval to commission a provider to deliver a reparation of unpaid work service, again, as part of a joint commission with other South Yorkshire local authorities. Again, this is a contract that will cease at the end of March next year, so we're looking to have provision in place from the 1st of April with Sheffield as the lead commissioner.
Are there any questions on this one? No. Okay, so the recommendation is that the Education, Children and Families Policy Committee approves the commission of an external provider to deliver a reparation and unpaid work service as part of a joint commission with Rotherham and Barnsley Youth Justice Service with an estimated value of £256,200 to Sheffield City Council over a period of four years. Do we all agree? That one is agreed, thank you very much. And we've got one more on this, which is on page 275, which is the Victim Engagement and Support Service Contract.
Yep, so again, we're seeking committee approval to recommission Victim Engagement Service, which provides support to both offenders, victims and families through a restorative approach. Again, this contract will cease at the end of March next year, so we're looking to undertake a reprocurement to make sure we've got continued provision from the 1st of April, again, with the other South Yorkshire local authorities for a period of four years.
Thank you, do any members have questions on this one? No, so the recommendation is that the Education, Children and Families Policy Committee approves the commission of an external provider to deliver a victim engagement service as part of a joint commission with Rotherham and Barnsley Youth Justice Service with an estimated cost of £277,200 to Sheffield City Council over a period of four years as set out in the report. Are we all in agreement? Thank you, that's agreed. Thank you very much. So the next item on the agenda is item 17, which is on page 285 and it's our Quarter One Budget Monitoring. Hi Jane, you all right? Yep, if you'd like to start, thank you.
Thank you Chair. I'm Jane Wilby, Head of Accounting. The purpose of the report is to bring the committee up to date with the first quarter's financial position for 2324. The full report was presented to the Finance Committee on the 11th of September and this is a shortened version for the Education, Children and Families Committee. At Quarter One, the general fund is forecasting an overspend of £17.6 million against a net revenue budget of £487 million. This represents a 3.6% overspend against net revenue budget. In 2122, the council identified £70 million of general fund reserves to draw on to manage the risk associated with the delivery of our budgets and savings plans. After two years of budget deficits, we now have £30 million left. The fund was intended to assist with the delivery of budget improvement plans and stabilise the delivery of our base budget. If we spend another £17 million this year, we will only have £13 left for any risks going into next year. The budget improvement plans continue to be a challenge this year and of the £47.7 million savings, it's forecast that 37 will be delivered, which is a 78% delivery rate, which is an improvement on the 2223 delivery rate of 65%. There are some one-off items in the outturn that are mitigating the overall position and some of that is included is the social care grant allocation, which has been included in the children's and the adults' position. And there is uncertainty as whether this will continue, we will continue to receive funding in future years. So the three areas of overspend for the council really are in three areas. Adult social care, £3.2 million, which has seen a better financial position in recent years, somewhat offset by some of the one-off funding. Education, children and families, overspend of £8.9 million. And in housing, we have £8.4 million relating to homelessness support in temporary and supported accommodation. Some of this is in the housing general fund, some of it is in the HRA. And this is basically due to increased demand and a shortage of suitable accommodation, leading to an increased use of hotels and temporary accommodation and unregistered providers in supported exempt accommodation that's not fully subsidised by DWP. These are consistent across the board by other local authorities and that's been reflected in their first quarter forecast positions similar to ours. Our core city comparators are also noting similar issues in Leeds, Nottingham, Bristol and Birmingham, particularly regarding children's social care residential placements. In Education, Children and Families, the overspend is £8.9 million against a net revenue budget of £115.8 million. And the key overspends relate to placements with external residential, a particular issue. The forecast is expected to exceed the previous year's cost by £4.8 million. This is alongside undelivered targets from the previous year of £2 million. There are also a savings proposal of £1.6 million into increased fostering placements this year that's also forecast not to be delivered. Marketing is taking place and the number of foster carers is not really increasing. And that's a national issue since the pandemic, as many older foster carers have exited the market. There is further demand in home school, transport and costs are creating an additional £3 million overspend this year against budgets. Of the committee's 6.9 million budget improvement plans only, they were expected to fall short by £3.7 million. It's worth noting as well that medium-term financial analysis was presented to the Strategy and Results Committee on the 7th of September, which set out the council's position over the next four years and identified a funding gap of £61 million, 18 of which will fall in 2425. There's a table in 1.6.7 which notes the committee targets for 2425 and some key assumptions around budget setting. The report also noted that services are required to develop solutions to bridge that budget gap for 2425 and bring forward proposals to November committee meetings, whilst still working hard to bring the in-year overspend down through ongoing work on recovery plans. The Education, Children and Families budget target is set at £8.3 million for next year. The report is to note the financial position of the council and the committee at quarter one, 2324, and the next update with the quarter two results will be due in the December committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Jane. Thank you. Again, before anybody wants to, if anybody's got any questions or comments on this, I would like to thank all of the teams that are working in this area for the work that they are doing to look at ways in which we can ensure that we get value for money and that we can look at alternative ways of taking care of our children and young people. But the fundamental fact of the matter is that we are responsible for looking after our children and young people and we will not turn them away. The issue we do have is that we are open to the markets. And we have had many conversations about this in that this, nationally, this fundamentally needs to change. People should not be making profit on children who are the most vulnerable children in our city. And we will be having long conversations about that. But I do need to, again, like I said, I do need to thank our teams, our officers, Sally and her team and Meredith and everyone really, to look at how we ensure, despite all of these budget cuts, despite all of the, you know, it's difficult to look at cutting things when you know that things are, costs of things are rising. And, you know, we know that people are having to do that every day at home and we're having to do exactly the same thing here. But when it comes to children, we cannot turn children away and we will always, despite these budget worries, we will always ensure that children are at the heart of our decision making and it will not be guided by the finances, unfortunately. Sorry, Jane. But, you know, we have to ensure that children are safe and we will be rational with our spending. We will ensure that we spend effectively and save where we can. But safeguarding of children in Sheffield is the absolute priority. So I'd just like to thank everyone for all of the work that they are doing. And I know that we do have plans. We have a vision for our children moving forward so that we can save money. So, sorry, did anybody want to comment or say anything? Meredith?
So, thank you. One of the really powerful parts of the Ofsted inspection was that understanding that our early help services are really strong and powerful and they are helping us prevent escalation of needs, so that we're providing the right support at the right time in the right place. And we are working, I think we're meeting on a pretty much a fortnightly, if not weekly basis, looking at our budgets and how we can make sure that they are as effective and efficient as possible. What our analysis is showing us clearly, and I've referenced this a number of times in the conversations, is that where we are bringing children into care and actually our number of children coming into care is lower than other places, our statistical neighbours, our core cities. And that's because we are funding that early help, which is cheaper in the first place. But even when children are coming into care, we are finding the best outcome for children, which is also the most resource effective. So looking at extended family, looking at connected kinship to make sure that we have children in a family setting, which is, whilst we're still making sure that we're paying the right amount of money, is a lower, lower cost. We need to do more work around fostering and we've just appointed somebody who is overseeing that at the moment and making sure that we're really, making sure that we're recruiting foster carers. And we've already seen some real green shoots. So again, that's one of the saving issues. But also, if we have in-house foster carers for those children who can't stay in their family, that also has better outcomes and is more cost effective. We are really looking very closely at our residential provision. We have residential provision which we provide within the local authority. We're looking at that, making sure that becomes good and outstanding. It's part of the work that's coming to committee as well to look at that. But where children, we've got a small number of children who have to go to residential provision outside of that. That's really high cost. That is, can have a good impact if the right therapies are there and we, but it's also got that issues within the market. So we're really looking at how, whether those children are in the right place, whether they're in the right setting. And Sally is on that on a daily basis about whether we can make sure that we're getting better efficiency. But it does come back to the point that councillor Dale made. Around send transport, again, we're absolutely looking at what we need to do differently. There needs to be some real transformational work that we're doing that links with the work that we're doing around special educational needs and disabilities. And it's about how we support people being, children being independent and how we make sure that we've got the best, most cost-effective transport provision. Demand is going up. We know there are more children who have EHCP plans, who have more complexity of need. How are we absolutely making sure that we are doing the right thing and making sure that we are certain that the budget is right and that we are reducing costs wherever we can? So I just want to give you that assurance that it's on top of our agenda, but it also links through to what we have to do and what our statutory duty is for children. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more comments or questions for Jane? Councillor Meredith?
It's just a comment. I think we're quite aware that the budget crisis is quite severe for us and likely to increase in the next coming years from £8.9 million. Do you expect us to be, we're not expected to be in the Birmingham position any time soon, are we? That's one question. And the second one is 1.7.8, which I think Meredith has actually touched upon, is the public, sorry, the home to school transport, so overspending by £3 million. Just for clarity, nothing else. A lot of home to school is done through transport services within the council. Is there any external provision that we procure in that could be, could be looked at? Because again, something that's been highlighted in Birmingham was one of those contracts as well, where I think it was, it was challenged. But I do recognise that we, as a committee, have got a fair challenge ahead of us. Thank you.
Thank you, Andrew. Did you, I've just seen you pop in, did you want to respond to that?
Yeah, in relation to the transport, we've seen, since before the pandemic, about a 50% increase in the number of children who are transported. But we've also then, there's not actually been growth in terms of the places that are transported by the council. So in other words, of the current place, of the current number of children who we transport, half are transported by the council's internal service and half are transported via private providers, specifically namely taxes, to be precise.
Okay.
And I'm sorry, I guess that, referring back to Meredith's point, that is the kind of territory that we'll be looking at in terms of how we look at what is the best, the most effective transport for children, young people first, first of all. And then actually to see whether that, whether we can have a more efficient version of that.
Thank you, Andrew. Okay, so that paper was for noting. Thank you. Jane wants to, oh yeah, she would like to comment on the Birmingham thing.
Sorry, thank you, Chair. Yeah, on the Birmingham position, I think we did sort of do an analysis on the core cities, sort of outturn on the first quarter results. And Birmingham was showing a 9.4 percentage overspend against their net revenue budget. Some of that related to an IT implementation overspend, which spanned over a number of years. So they've got significant issues in that area. They'd also got the equal pay claim, which is, you know, that wasn't dealt with back in, when it first came to light, which has caused an issue with having to fund that from reserves. I think when they looked at the provision, they didn't have an adequate provision to be able to cover that, really. We're not in the similar places Birmingham. Our overspend is 3.6% against net revenue budget, which is not brilliant, but it's by no means the worst in terms of other core cities. We're sort of not mid-table in terms of where we are with our overspend, which, when we've looked where that is falling, it is largely in children's services. And reading through the narrative in other papers, a lot of the similar issues that we're having with the residential placements, high cost of placements, limited number of placements, which therefore, you know, limited supply means that prices is, you know, astronomical in some cases. And that's similar across the board. We are in a better position with reserves and being able to manage some of the overspend. We have got some funding available to be able to support delivery of some of the transformational savings plans. Some of the stuff that we're talking about with transport and all the work across the board is really focusing on stabilising the base budget, which is what we need to be doing, particularly within this committee as well. So I don't see that we're in a Birmingham position just yet, but it is consistent issues across the board.
Thank you for that. There was a reason for asking that question, Chair, and that was because we self-referred to Birmingham City Council to look at our finances. And you can, you can read anything you like into that, can't you, after that, if you wanted to be so mischievous about it? But I'm sure that it was done very professionally. Thank you.
Thank you, Jane. So we're now on to agenda item number 18, which is the update report from the Strategic Director of Children's Services, Elizabeth Meredith.
I'm happy just to take any questions. It's there for your information and update. Hopefully it is useful and I'm happy to take any, any comments on how it could be more useful to you as a committee.
Any comments or questions for Meredith? No? Well, that's that then. Thank you, everyone, for coming to this month's meeting. The date of our next meeting is the, what about the date? Is it November?
It's the 2nd of November.
2nd of November. So hopefully we'll see you all here and have a nice evening. Thank you very much.